Everybody. Everybody must love the Buckeye. Good evening. I will now call to order the November 5, 2025 Closed Session Meeting of the South Pasadena City Council at 5:15 PM. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson. Councilmember Permit.
Here.
Councilmember Cacciotti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rossi.
Here.
Mayor Braun.
Here.
If you would like to make a public comment, now is the time. Please submit a speaker card to the Acting Chief City Clerk. Acting Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Any speakers on Zoom?
No hands raised.
Okay. There being no one present to speak, I will now declare the public comment period closed. At this time, the City Council will convene in closed session for the matters listed on the agenda. Okay. Good evening. I will now call to order the November 5, 2025 Special City Council Study Session of the South Pasadena City Council at 6:22 PM. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Permit.
Here.
Councilmember Cacciotti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rossi.
Here.
Mayor Braun.
Yes, here. Okay, let's go to item number one, which is the consideration to review and discuss and provide direction regarding the Library Park Campus Site Plan. And Library Director Kathy Billings will present the item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Kathy Billings, the Library Director, and I'm here on behalf of my colleague as well, Lucy Hakobian, who's the Community Services Director, because of course this project involves that department and the library department. So again, tonight, we are here to present to the City Council the final report for the Library Community Center Site Plan Project, which has been prepared by Group 4 Architecture, Research and Planning. That is the firm that the city hired to lead us through this process of developing a site plan for the Library Park Campus. The concept of a Library Park Campus was conceived by the Ad Hoc Committee that was established by the City Council in May 2024 to work closely with staff and the consultant on developing a vision for the site. Tonight, the Ad Hoc Committee will present its recommendation to the City Council regarding the preferred site plan, which is really the culmination of more than a year of diligent work that the committee members undertook with great enthusiasm and passion. The Ad Hoc Committee is made up of 14 members, including two council members, representatives from the Community Services Commission, the Library Board of Trustees, the South Pasadena Senior Citizens Foundation, and the Friends of the South Pasadena Public Library, and an additional eight at-large committee members that were chosen from a pool of more than 57 applicants and chosen to represent a wide range of backgrounds, views, and expertise that is representative of the city of South Pasadena and our community. So I would like to recognize the current committee members and note that they have selected two members tonight to present on their behalf, on the committee's behalf. And these are at-large members Julia Wang and Rich Elbaum, who are here tonight. They will join us shortly. And then in addition, we have our mayor, Janet Braun, is on the committee. Our Mayor Protem Sheila Rossi is a committee member. We have Dean Sterwen, who represents the Board of Trustees, Leslie Albe Field, who's here tonight, and Dean is here from the Community Services Commission, Kristin Dubay from the Friends of the Library, who is here, Alexandria Levitt from the Senior Citizens Foundation. And then finally, these are our at-large members, just representing the community at large. We have Tom Afshar, Tony Ho, Eugene Kim, Victoria Rocha, Bianca Richards, and Jasmine Wong. So I just wanted to acknowledge them for their hard work. The purpose of the Site Plan Project was to explore the possibility of a new facility for library and senior services on the site, or the renovation of existing facilities. These facilities are often described as the heart of the community, both in terms of their geographic location, but also because of the many services and programs that they provide that enhance the quality of life for our residents. After more than four decades of heavy use and some accumulated deferred maintenance, the buildings are no longer meeting the needs of library users and the seniors and the community at large. So to that end, the city engaged Group 4, and I'm going to introduce our consultant in just a moment. Group 4 is a firm that specializes in civic architecture and has completed library and community centers across the country. And we chose them to lead us through this process, which included extensive community engagement, needs assessment, site assessment, and then the generation of site plan concepts which were vetted by the committee. So with that, I'm going to introduce Dawn Merkis. Dawn is the principal in charge, a principal in charge, at Group 4 Architecture, and she's going to take us through the project that the committee went through, and then when she's finished, Rich and Julia will come up and talk about the committee's recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Dawn Merkis, a pleasure to be here and present this study to you tonight. This library project really is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make a huge impact on your community. Getting to know South Pasadena, as we've gone through this process, it's clear, just in the visits that we've made, that this facility, this park, your tree, the historical building are well-loved by the community, but not just well-loved, well-used. People are at this building night and day, Saturdays and Sundays, Mondays and Tuesdays, all day long, and if you were there tonight, you would see it very busy and buzzing even then. Okay. So the project goals were to, can I go back on that? Got one? Yes, all right. Modernize and upgrade the facilities that are outdated or no longer meet the current needs of the community, and to create a vibrant intergenerational community campus that supports current and future needs of the community. The project overview is really that the, it's not just the facility, it's the whole site, it's the one block in downtown. It includes the historic 1930 Community Hall, which is about 3,000 square feet, the main library, which was built in 1982 at 19,000 square feet, and the 1982 Senior Center at 5,700 square feet. It is on the edge of your commercial district, as well as residential and mixed use. Our project work plan, we started in January and we completed in October. We had our project management team, our historical consultant is Paige Internball, and then we worked with the Ad Hoc Committee through 12 meetings, including two days of facility tours, and then also with community staff, technical meetings, commission meetings, for a total of 23 meetings. Is there a better place for me to point this? And so as we look at the facility assessment, basically, your library is overcrowded. There's lots of books, there's lots of people, but there's not lots of seats for the people. The Senior Center is very well-used, very well-appreciated, but very much outdated. The whole facility is really inefficient if you look at the circulation and the flow. It's overcrowded, and circulation is hard to find, and it's difficult to navigate, honestly. The community engagement was hugely successful. Over, well, almost 3,000 people participated in the community engagement, and it included the open house, community workshops, online paper surveys as well, farmers markets, extravaganza, electric music festival, library kiosk was up for six weeks. The survey itself included about 672 respondents, and then with the in-person and online, that was almost 3,000 people. And what we heard was books are still very, very popular. And so all we hear about libraries becoming obsolete is not true. First thing for libraries was books for all ages, then quiet reading, work-study spaces, children's play and learning, as well as library of things. So a lot of libraries don't just lend out books, they lend out tools, they lend out arts and crafts, they lend out multiple things, and your community was very interested in that as well. The senior community interests were fitness and wellness, games and hobbies, senior lounge, and nutrition and meals. As we looked at the shared use spaces, a place for performances, movies, places to listen to music, visual and creative arts, lifelong learning and classes, cooking classes. As we looked at the park campus, it was enjoying the existing trees, attending markets and fairs, attending community performances and events, as well as just enjoying the trees and walking the site. As we look at the site assessment, the library location is really ideal for the community, being the transition from the residential neighborhood to the commercial area, kind of the bridge from the residence to the commercial district, close to parking, close to public transit, close to all of these great amenities that create the great synergy that is at the park. Some of the findings that we had for the site were that parking, which can be very controversial, was looked at and looked at in detail, but that additional parking was not needed on the site, that the street parking and the available parking lot that the city has was sufficient, and the site is zoned appropriately for that. As we look at the historical Morton Bay Fig Tree, it is currently about 100 years old. Expected that type of tree can live up to 200 years. So allow the community to enjoy another year, 100 years of that tree, and retain it on the site, as well as the 1930s historical community room, very much appreciated by the community and a historical resource. As we look at the site assessments, one of the things we are looking at for the site is how to improve access to the site. With the two accesses, one on Oxley and one on El Centro, it's confusing to the community how to get into the building. And then two actually entrances, one for the Senior Center and one for the library on Oxley. So take advantage of the site by really using that corner that is on El Centro and Fairview as the prominent entrance to the building, making that be your main entrance. Reuse your historical 1930s building, integrate it into a new facility or renovated facility, and then use that community room and the Bay Fig Morton Tree to really celebrate the For the needs assessment, your library really is about the appropriate size. As we look at national standards, peer communities, kind of what you need to serve your community is typically between 20,000 to 30,000 square feet for your community of this size. Currently with the community room and the library, you have 22,000 square feet. So it's definitely in the range. As we look at the Senior Center, as we look at your overall recreation and community center needs, that is on the much lower end of national standards and peer communities. So looking at opportunities to meet what you can on this site, and then look for other sites to meet the balance of those needs. As we look at a combined facility, what we're recommending for your location is, with the community room renovated, is a total facility between 27,300 square feet and 40,800 square feet. We've developed three programs. The columns that you see here, existing is the first column, then we've got renovation of a 27,000-square-foot building, which basically is the same square footage that you currently have, but reallocating that and improving it. Then we're looking at new construction is our column B, and each of these is kind of taking a step, making places more functional, improving access, improving spaces, improving seats and usability. Our third column is looking at a 40,000-square-foot facility. And the square footage is, as you look from your existing to the new, you can see there is some reallocation of spaces, from adult spaces to children's spaces, and then as we get up to the 40,000 square feet, everything proportionally just gets a little bit larger. Looking at this in terms of people in the building and how they can be served, we're looking at a table here that really summarizes what you currently have, and then our aspirations in terms of a full program to meet your community needs is listed on the left here. As we're looking at the options for improvement across the right on the top, you can see how each level of improvement, we're able to meet more goals. We're able to increase the seats, we're able to increase the spaces, and provide more services and programs to the community. From those programs, we've developed site options. And the site options, we're showing the first column is your existing footprint on the site. The second one shows the renovation of your existing footprint, which is the 27,000 square feet. The third one is the renovation of just the 1930s Community Hall with new construction to total 27,000 square feet. And then the third one at the upper end of the spectrum here is our 40,000-square-foot option, which also includes renovation of the 1930s building. I'd like to point out at this high level that these are kind of the full spectrum. So just depending on financial capacity, the time that you move ahead, programs will change. Things are evolving very quickly, and so this feasibility study really just provides those parameters for you to work within. I will say that the renovation of the existing facility does create a lot of challenges. The structure of the existing building, it is smaller framed, and so the spaces are not open, and it's challenging to provide the flow and the flexibility and the functionality that you want in a newer building, and those charts that I just showed you previously really reflect that. As we look at the cost models, hope everyone's holding on to your seats, costs just continue to rise exponentially. And all of us who are building buildings and doing construction estimates all the time, we get a little bit desensitized to it, but when you look back five years, 10 years, the numbers have changed drastically. We have shown you a range of dollars for each of these options, and that is because the details of these options are, there's options for better finishes, less expensive finishes, higher ceilings, lower ceilings, and this level of study, it would be kind of presumptuous to just give you one number. And so giving you the range, we've given it to in Q2 2025 dollars, and then we have escalated it up to Q1 2028 dollars. And so looking at the low end for the renovation of the existing building, for the escalated numbers, we're looking at 21 million to 25 million for the option B, which is the new construction with 27,000 square feet with the historical 1930s building. On the low end for the escalated numbers, 36.6 million to 41.4 million. And for the 40,000-square-foot option, we're looking at 53 to 60 million. And again, at the time when you take go to the next step, there's many different iterations in between any of these, and they're basically, you can percentage-wise down at this budget and level. So I think at this point, I get to hand it over to Rich and Julia.
So Rich and I are from, representing the Ad Hoc Committee, and we, we were the committee that requested a lot of rigorous research from Group 4. So unfortunately, we are probably to thank for the 116-page document that you can peruse at your leisure. One of the things that, actually, of the many things we asked Group 4 to look into is we asked them for information about the site itself. We asked them to collect information about the needs of the community. We also wanted them to collect information about where we stand with our peers, because that helps us to have a, it's an easy image to compare yourself to your peers to understand, like, well, are we keeping on track with what we need for our community right now, and how are we planning for the future? So if you only look at one or two pages in the 116-page document, the one thing I would ask you to look at would be in page 45-ish to 47, there are some peer comparisons, and what you'll see is that, oh, it's not a big deal. I will give you the overall gist, which is, which is that in our area, so if you're considering San Marino, South Pasadena, Sierra Madre, Altadena, Pasadena, comparing amongst all of the libraries in neighboring communities, we actually have the second highest visit rate, which says that our library is used very highly. It is a very popular place. We have a lot of need for it in our community. And then if you flip down to peer comparisons, you'll also see, however, though, that our library's square foot per resident is a third of what San Marino's is. So San Marino is number one in terms of visits by the community, we're number two in terms of visits by the community. However, we are all the way down at number, was it seven, eight, nine, something around there for our allotted square footage. So just to keep that in mind when we're thinking about what are the needs for our library. Group 4 did a, did an envisioning of, of the options of A, B, and C. And one of the things that they brought up was the fact that A is keeping everything as is, but that maintains a lot of difficulties for any of us, all of us who live in South Pasadena, who have a historic home and has tried to remodel within the constraints of it. Option number B is favorable in that it allows for both maintaining the priorities of the historic nature of the building, which was something that the community heavily prioritized, but allows us to envision the needs of our current community and the future with the new construction. One of the things that was presented in B, if you look at it, is that the rough square footage is stated as the same roughly as option A. And that's where our Ad Hoc Committee wanted to highlight a difference. So our Ad Hoc Committee's recommendation is what we call a B+. So to take that idea of maintaining the historic nature, but to add some additional square footage. So to that end, there was an add-on page that you should have received, which talks about adding a 10% to 20% additional square footage. And when you look at their recommendations in this chart of, that includes all of the community priorities, one of the things that is harder to capture in this flow chart of possibilities is the fact that in an option B+, instead of looking for dedicated spaces, which would be in option C, which would require significantly more square footage and significantly more finances, a B+ would be something where we would be looking at multi-use rooms. And the reason we bring this up, the B+, is because we feel that that would be an answer that would meet the needs of our community, as the community has expressed, with potential for growth into the future. And this is important for, that we'd like to put forward for the Council to consider for next steps, because that would be a major driver in what you're looking for in a bid from an architectural firm, is to look for a firm that can confidently create multi-use spaces that would lend themselves to meeting all of these stated community needs, but without necessarily needing to create dedicated spaces for each one of them at a significantly higher price tag. So to summarize, we're recommending an option B+, which would include the historic, but an additional 10% to 20% larger, so that we can focus on meeting the needs of the community across how we anticipate our community growing in the future, especially considering the increased commercial plans for the area. And for that end, we heavily recommend that the architectural firm be chosen with the key factor in mind of their ability to create multi-use rooms that would meet these needs as summarized by Group 4.
Good evening, Mayor Braun, Mayor Protem Rossi, and the Council. My name is Rich Elbaum. Just wanted to, Julia did a great job of covering kind of the what and what our recommendation is as an Ad Hoc Committee. I'd like to just take a couple of minutes and talk about some of the whys. The committee is acutely aware that the city has been through this process a number of years ago, and the document is sitting on a shelf somewhere. There's a cost to doing that in terms of every time you wait, you know, you defer things, it's going to cost more, and you're falling further behind. Another thing has to do with the importance of connection. And we don't know what the future will hold in terms of technology and all of that, but we know that there's a pressing need throughout the country. People want to connect, and they're having a hard time doing that. Our library is crucial for doing that. And while the staff is doing a great job with the existing facilities, they're just, you know, kind of bursting at the seams, and it's very much out of date, and it's not going to get any more, it's not going to get better by letting it go, it's just going to, going to cost more money. The other thing that I've seen as we toured other libraries is we saw a few where, unlike the current facility here, they did have more of an integration between the Senior Center and the library, and this creates benefits for everybody, not just for the seniors, but for the, the library users, the people in the park, and so forth. And so the idea in this, these proposed designs are to kind of tear down some of those literal walls between the two facilities, we can also share things. And the last thing I wanted to say is, we don't know what the future will hold, and so with this Plan B+, it provides a certain amount of flexibility, so that things that no one can predict now, but will be reality in 10, 20, or 30 years, the city will be able to handle. So I think there's a, a sense of urgency to this, as well as an important getting input from everyone in the community. So, thank you.
Does the Council have questions for Rich, or Julia, or myself? Any questions? John? No. Omari?
I do have a couple of questions, and then maybe, you know, you were on the subcommittee, so you, you, Council could probably answer them. I just, when we're looking at option A, is that kind of representative of like a minimally viable product essentially? Is that like the, the minimum for option A?
Sorry, like in terms of the lowest-cost option?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
A is the, the lowest cost that we think would allow us to meet the basic goals of the project?
So I think you're, are you talking on page 81? So I think option A is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that basically, as, correct me, Rich, or Julia, or Kathy, if I'm misspeaking, but I think as it became clear what the costs look like, I think we sort of backed into option A of like, okay, well, what would it look like if we just renovated what we already had? I think that's kind of where we, that's kind of how that evolved. And I think when that became clear, we're like, wow, well, that's still very expensive, and you're having to deal with old wiring, old walls, no windows, et cetera. So I think that when the group considered option A, which was backed into, it was like, well, if you're going to do it, maybe you need to do it right. But it's a question of funding.
Okay. So like, I mean, one of the things that I kind of saw was that there, there's been some identification of things that are like non-compliant with current code and et cetera, and like accessibility issues. If we were to say, let's just tackle the things that bring the building out of current compliance, as opposed to a full renovation, is that what option A is representative of? And I guess like what I'm kind of gathering- And I guess, like, what I'm kind of gathering is that it represents a refurbishment of the facility within its current footprint as it exists, but then bringing things to, like, compliant code, et cetera.
I, I think not only bringing it to code, but that, that option A offers, it does meet many of the goals, right? It's not as efficient as new construction would be, but it would enable us to move services around, so you know where the children's room is now, potentially moving that to another area. You know, I, I think that there's a lot that can be done in, in option A. I think that the committee would like to see the new construction, but certainly, option A, you know, for $20 million, we're getting, going to get a lot.
Okay. So it does, it, at, at some levels, it represents some reconfiguration of that which is. So it's beyond the scope of what's minimally viable, in a sense.
I think that's right. Correct. Yes. Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, do you have any other questions?
Um, yeah, the, one thing I noticed in there was that we kind of spoke to the senior center, the, the capacity projections. Is, does that kind of take into account the overall demographics of the city, as far as, like, the aging population, et cetera? Okay.
We didn't look at the aging population specifically. I think that our square footage on that site has an upper limit. So regardless of how many seniors we have, or how many residents we have total, we'll probably never be able to build the square footage capacity to serve all of those people. So I think that what we're looking at is doing the best we can to address the issue of our Rina numbers and how things we will change over time. But the idea is that we get as much space as we can to serve as many people as we can. And Sheila, you want to?
Yes, I was going to make a comment, and I think may clarify some things. I think a large portion of this project, and the ad hoc libraries group's work, was really doing a needs assessment and doing community outreach and survey. And I think one of the challenges is we're looking at kind of conceptual programs here, but they are very much conceptual. And so really, I think the question that we're really getting to is, do we do a minimal amount for renovation? Do we go for a much bigger build? Or do we try to see if there's something in between that has the multi-use purposes without getting locked in necessarily into what you're looking at in the images that you're looking at the page? Because that would come in at a later design stage, when bringing in an architect and saying, now we're ready to design. Because I will be quite honest, there are issues and challenges that I have with even the conceptuals that are here. For instance, having a senior center on the second floor is a problem. I'm not sure if we're, we're right there. And I'm, I am concerned as well, is we're looking at increased densities of what the right square footage is, if we're really looking at just doing, you know, and I think that's why they're saying that B-plus, I'd almost say B-plus plus, because maybe we don't need to have the 56,000 square foot, but maybe we might want to have something a little bit bigger than what we have, recognizing that our population will be growing, and seeing how we can get the funding for that. I think, as most people understand, one of the challenges that we have is to be able to go get funding and apply for funding. We have to have a needs assessment, and then we need to go through the process, the second process of getting the design, so we can have shovel-ready projects. So I think this is, to me, this was a very in-depth, and I think the ad hoc committee was incredible with the amount of, like, wanting to understand the needs and whatnot. But to really do a needs assessment, community service, this, a survey, what does the community really want to have? And then the next step would be looking and saying, okay, now we take conceptual ideas, and how do we make that into something that we can afford? Right? Or is it a price tag that maybe we could afford with some funding and additional things? And, and it might be tweaking this. That's why I think it's even a B-plus plus. But I, I agree, because I think we did a lot of, we went toward a number of facilities. We didn't see a single one that was a library slash senior center slash community center. So I think when the conceptuals came back to the committee's point, what you saw was dedicated spaces versus, I think, what our community is used to, is having some shared spaces. And I, you know, I actually love boat architecture and boat furniture, the fact, because you have to do small things and you have to figure out new, interesting ways to use it. So I think there's opportunity after this. So it's really, where do we want to hit in the funding level? And to move to the next step of design? Do we want to just say, we just want to do a renovation? Do we want to, you know, shoot for the moon? Or do we want to, like, move towards something that's not as B, but I'd say plus plus? That's it. Did I get that right for the ad hoc committee? I want to make sure.
Michael, do you have questions?
No. So during, if we were to choose to say the B-plus or B-plus plus, not getting to the higher level, which would be another five million dollars or so, anticipating the growth in, in, in population, housing laws, et cetera, density, can a building be constructed in such a way that, say we build it for that plus, then after 15 years, we realize we've got seven-story buildings like Beverly Hills, La Cañada now does, whole state, we can just easily build onto it on a second floor, accommodate another 10,000 square feet to build for the next 30, 40 years?
Don, can you come up and speak to that?
It would be like a construction design question.
That would be lovely, but no, the challenges with that are the building codes change every four years, the cycle. And so what we would design to initially, when you did the first phase of that, we would not know what the future codes were going to be. So you would then have to come back and renovate what you already built to extend up. And so when you typically expand, you would do like a cold shell or a warm shell and build it out, and then come back and fill it in at a future date. And many cities have done that, when they can't afford to fit it out all in the first phase. But the construction cost of a cold shell over a warm shell, it will exceed 50% to 70% of the full construction cost. So that in itself is not cheap to do.
So that's why, Michael, I go back to, I think that this is a phase one, and then the next step is the phase two, because the world was changing in the process. And I, you know, I think I gave the poor group a hard time, because even our SCAG numbers, despite saying that we needed to have 2,000 new units, they've had our population growing at like 100 people, right? And so we pushed to like, okay, what are we really looking at, at population numbers? And now, even in the last month, the world has changed. And as they were going through, they were looking at scale compared to the neighborhood. The scale to the neighborhood changed in the process, because we went from having two-story buildings around, now El Centro is allowed to be taller buildings, on, is known to be significantly taller buildings, and that wasn't taken into consideration to this process. So that's why I go back to, I think this is a stage one of the process, and the next stage will be saying, okay, once we go to the design piece, with this kind of financial budget constraints, what can we do that's innovative?
If there are no more questions, let's get to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I did have one more.
Oh, one more question. Sorry, Omari, because we've got a meeting.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, my, third and final question.
My kind of guy.
When we were, I noticed that a lot of this is based around specifically the existing campus as it exists, and I'm wondering if it was ever considered to expand out into the street and reduce the size of the street around the campus, especially considering that there is a portion of the street that is kind of almost exclusively used for vehicle parking. So I'm wondering if traffic consideration reduction around the site was considered for an expansion to therefore give you some square footage without necess, you know, if that, if, if that didn't come into play, or, or if it was omitted, if there was any particular reason as to why?
I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to say something really quickly, as somebody who lives on that street, and just remembering that with the new housing laws, that they don't have parking requirements for any of the new developments that are coming, because of its proximity to a metro station. So I think the challenge, what we looked at was whether or not we could put in underground parking. The issue with underground parking would be cost. It would add another, like, what, 10 million, at least to the cost to put any sort of underground parking? So if you're saying, like, the expansion to completely, like, get rid of any of the parking around the library?
I, I think also, Omari, I'm sorry for stepping in, but if, if you're talking about expanding, I do think there are some neighborhood concerns, right? I think that, two, two things. I think there's, one, it's neighborhood, we, it's referred to as the library park. So if you expand the building out, you're taking away some of the park-like features. And then the further you go into, you're talking about on Oxley, go sort of south on Oxley?
I'm talking about, let's say, a portion of Fairview, take a portion of that street, or take a portion of the street.
Oh, take a portion of Fairview.
Or take a portion of the street to the north of the facility, because you are going to be, kind of already have a lot of pedestrian activity, and you're planning on doing a lot of development north of that. So I'm trying to like-
So it wasn't a consideration, I mean, I think one thing that's come up over the last few months is whether or not you close off El Centro. I mean, to, if you close off Fairview, then there's-
Or reduce it.
Well, there's actually no access for people to get to their homes.
Well, yeah, so I'm sorry, so I think that you-
But if, but if you reduce it, then it's, I mean, again, it's a question, it's a question, one of the things that we're going to have to look at as a city, is, especially with the developments and the commercial property that's opening there, including ones that will bring, bringing in hundreds of people at a time, without parking. So the question, like, you're talking about about 10 spaces.
So, so I think the answer to your question is no.
Okay.
Correct. That was not really part of the scope.
There are parking questions.
Aside the scope.
And just FYI, so across the street where the commercial development is, Ganji, and I think we talked to them very, very briefly. They're talking about, and I know Todd, that we've, very preliminary, could we jointly do a parking under the Ganji development across the street? But that is millions of dollars. So, but, but parking's been thought about.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So let's go on to public comment. Do we have some public comment?
Yeah.
Oh, you need to fill out a card? Did you have a card?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call your name. We'll call your name.
I have two in-person speakers.
Okay. Are you coming for the library, or are you coming for the regular meeting for public comment?
Public comment.
For the library, we're talking about the library right now. So you're coming, I think, for the next meeting, which will be shortly. I, I believe.
Are you making a public comment about the library specific?
So our first public comment is Josh Bedda.
I didn't expect to speak tonight, but I'm a library lover, every city I've ever worked in. I was over, walk, going to the library here most every day, and I figured that lunch was for wimps. And I love books, I love to hold things in my hands, paper. But in the passion, in the community, is what inspires us all. People are really committed to things. But I wanted to, with, with some ignorance about everything, I wasn't part of the process, make it easy for the council here to say that $21 to $60 million is not what we can do. I heard Sheila's comments there, and I haven't been around for a lot of her points, and I'm sure they're perfectly salient. But if we're looking at a parcel tax of 67% of our voters for streets, how do we do this? How do we do this? If it's considered a combination of parcel tax for both street improvements that are 25 years, 45, 50 years behind, how do we do this with the library as well? The mayor's told me that Alhambra received a grant to do a library, and I'm dumbstruck. I'd never seen that as a finance director before. So that feels really good. And perhaps there's something for us in that regard. But this is a real topic, about how to afford these things. It's a big price tag. And I hope that liberates you, to be able to explore this topic in open session about affordability, and just take the elephant partially out of the room here about that. I love the ambition. Just tell me where there are books instead of computers, and I'm right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Victoria Roca.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm actually one of the members of the committee, and it's been such a pleasure to serve on this committee. I'm always really amazed at the engagement that this community has in these processes, even volunteering out at the, the farmer's market, and seeing the enthusiasm putting up stickers is awesome, especially having worked in several other cities. I just want to note that a lot of this process really has to do with finance, financial readiness. Ultimately, what we're, in our recommendation, what we're saying is, was we're looking for the council to approve, moving forward a little bit deeper in having conceptual designs prepared, so that way, if there's future grant funding or appropriations abilities, that we have something ready to go. At the end of the day, in some of the cities that I've worked for, we have been able to get additional funding, because we were at that ready point. At this point, we are not ready for whatever is going to come next. And I understand that the current financial situation and economy, it's, it's tenuous. We're really, it's uncertain. But it's better to be prepared, so that way, when the money comes, we can actually be able to get it, versus having nothing at all and continuing to spin our wheels and not being able to move forward. So that was why the recommendation was, don't just do a renovation, because when you're making a case within a grant application or an appropriation request, saying that you want the same thing typically doesn't do well. When you're talking about, we've looked at the data and metrics that say, our population is looking like this, it's aging in this way, which is why these needs are critical, we then can build a better case as to why we need more than just a renovation, but maybe not the shoot-for-the-moon aspect of it. So that was why the recommendation came to be what it is, and I hope this council, as they move forward and what the next steps are, it really is about just the inch forward of getting those concept designs, so that way, we can actually go after funding when it becomes available again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am, and mayor.
So I was going to say really quickly, there, like, for instance, the state established a fund that was for library funds specifically, because we didn't have plans ready to go, that's why we didn't access them. Whereas not just Alhambra, it was, I think, Sierra Madre and a number of other communities were able to access the library funds that we weren't able to do. So the idea is that one, those funds will hopefully come back, but you also have a situation where, again, as, you know, I know I'm the Chicken Little of SB 79, but SB 79 just passed, one of my priorities from a lobbying perspective for a city, is to now say to the state, you have, you have said we should be taking on an increased level of the state housing needs. That brings density, we already have lower, our needs assessment shows, our facilities are already small for our current density, and so we actually need to, and that's why I'm not a fan of just the B by itself, I want B-plus plus. But we need to actually make sure we have facilities that will meet our density needs over the next, like, 50 years. And so we need to be going after that funding, and it, it doesn't exist yet, but I call it SB 79 state funding, that I really feel like that they should be providing cities, and I think will be lobbying for. But also looking again at developer impact fees, because that, that's a piece as well, is what, what are the kind of facility levels and increases that we need to be able to take on the, the increases and things? So that, thank you, Victoria. Now, Victoria works for another city in public works and understands that piece, and, you know, it's a one that's hard to grapple, because everyone's like, why are we doing the plan? It's like, well, because we can't do, we can't get the funding without getting the plan first. It's a little backwards.
Right. Yeah. Sierra Madre got 10 million, Alhambra got 20 million for community center, and, and Pasadena got 8 million to just do the retrofit engineering for their main library. So I would ask our city manager, from, what are you looking for from council? Are you looking for direction?
No, I think, I think what we're asking tonight is to accept the report. You know, we, we'll, we'll be in the process. I did, I did promise the committee we would hold off until I could speak with you tonight, and before we actually continue the, the surveying of the community in terms of this community center project, library community center project, as well as the, the road program. So that's going to start right after Thanksgiving. We'll be reaching out, trying to get a pulse from the community, how they feel about the road program, this particular project, what will they support? We'll be back to you with some of those results. And at the end of the day, the conversation from the council is going to be, what size package are you comfortable asking the community for in November of '26? And, you know, what size budget would you be comfortable, you know, setting aside for a project like this versus the streets in both? So that's what you're going to have to wrestle with in, you know, in the next few months.
Yep. Okay. I just want to say thank you to Kathy and to Lucy, and really to Victoria, and to Group Four, and to Julia, and to Rich, and to Bianca, and to Dean, and I don't know who else, Leslie, and Kristen, and everybody, anyway.
Don't forget Lucy Beck.
I said Lucy.
Okay.
And Melissa. Anyway, there were a lot of people who worked on this, and really did, were so committed, and really smart, and great input, and lots of hard work, and I really want to say thank you to all of them. I, I think- I think it was just a fabulous group, and I know they say they want, I think they want to stay together for the, for next round, whatever that is going to be. So thank you to all of you for all of your hard work.
I would just bring your attention to the recommendation, which is potentially to dissolve the committee as it stands now. And one of the recommendations that the committee has is that in whatever Phase Two is, that if there's another committee, they would like to be given the opportunity to serve on that. But if you want to consider whether or not to dissolve the committee that has done the site plan.
So do we need to do that? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Do we dissolve it or do we hold it?
The committee has completed the ad hoc work that you had asked them to complete, so the appropriate thing would be to go ahead and dissolve. You can reconstitute the committee if you decide to put something out, you know, and you need to, we need to start working on conceptual, or actually, it'd be more than conceptual drawings at that point, because you're going to need to start getting into design drawings at that point in order to have some idea what the cost would be. So if it becomes a project, if you decide to put it on the street, if the voters approve it, that's something where you could reconstitute them to start working on that, because we're going to need a committee to help. But once a budget is established, to figure all of that out.
Move the dissolution of the committee at this point with the recommendation of Todd. If it passes, we would reconstitute a similar committee with some of the same members, but add more.
Well, I guess on that motion, did you want to, do you want to have the same members or do you want to have them, have the opportunity to apply? Because you don't know when in time that's
Yes, have the opportunity that the original members can apply, and our recommendation is to accept some of them because of the background and experience in this project.
Yeah, I was going to say I would give them, I mean, they've put in a lot of work and they have a lot of the background. I would at least make that, that they would have first priority, you know, they would have
First refusal.
First refusal, or if they wanted to serve, we'd love for them to serve.
I would too, because I feel like it's more of a continuation than a beginning of a whole new process, and I think the, I mean, even for me, I came in late into the process and had some catching up to do. I'd like to see it be more of a continuation of this process and going to the next
I guess I would say, I would make it, because a lot of us were on it because we have our council membership and our commission membership or board membership, and that may change. So I would say, I would almost say the at-large members, I don't know.
Well, now, why don't we reconstitute with prioritization given to the existing members, where we can, for that, I just, I don't want to see it completely dismantled and bringing in, and I remember, I didn't select a single person on this committee, so I just, I was on the council all the time, but I know that they have all worked really hard, they went and did the site tours, they went and looked, gave up their days to go look at the facilities, and I feel like it would be starting all over again versus actually just the next continuous phase. I think this was, quite frankly, I would have liked to have seen stronger conceptuals, and I feel like that would, I'd like to see this group go into the next phase and see the conceptuals.
Michael, what's your motion? I was, I thought it was a recommendation of the committee, they've finished their charge, dissolve the committee, and once we get to a certain stage of the process, then to reconstitute a committee, and those members should have first priority if they want to join.
Second.
Okay, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Purmit?
Yes.
Councilmember Ketya?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kathy and Lucy and Melissa and everyone, and thank you, ad hoc committee, and thank you, Julia, and all of you again, Julia and Rich. This has really been a great presentation and such great work over a long, over one year, so thank you. More to come.
Thank you all.
I will now adjourn the special city council study session at 7:14 PM. Thank you. Do we need to take a break? Anybody need a break or no?
Thank you.
You want?
Five minutes?
We'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 7:19. Okay. Okay, I know. We'll talk about that. Oh, sorry. Good evening. I will now call to order the November 5, 2025, regular city council meeting of the South Pasadena City Council at 7:20 PM. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Purmit?
Here.
Councilmember Ketya?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Here.
Mayor Braun?
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So would everyone, if you're able, please stand and put your hand over your heart.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Closed session announcements. City Attorney Diaz, could you please report out from our closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session for the items listed therein, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Okay, Adam Too, public comment general. This is for items not on the agenda. In an effort to better manage the business on the agenda, general public comment will be limited to 30 minutes at the beginning of the agenda. If there are speakers remaining in the queue at the end of that 30-minute period, they will be heard at the end of the meeting. If you would like to make a general public comment for items not listed on the agenda, please raise your hand on Zoom now or fill out a speaker card. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez has given me some of the cards. Do we have any additional cards?
No, Madam Mayor.
Any hands on Zoom?
One hand.
One hand on Zoom. We have many, many speakers here, so we are going to limit, we are going to limit public comment to two minutes. And let's, let us, there are a couple of under 18 people here, so we're going to start with them, that's my understanding. And so first will be Cindy Rubin, and second will be Dylan Rubin, and you'll each have two minutes. And then Yvonne LaRose will be number three.
Thank you. I'm not under 18, but my son is, so thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm a South Pasadena resident, a mother, and a coalition member. I am here today to express my support regarding the Breathe Clean Coalition mission, which is to promote healthy, clean air and safety for all members in our community. As a resident of South Pasadena for over two decades, I am constantly reminded of the strong values and high standards that make this city a wonderful place to live in and raise a family. We are known for excellence in education, dedication to public health, commitment to public safety, and we are very lucky to have this amazing and valuable network of a community for which residents of all ages may thrive in. When it comes to tobacco products tempting our children, there should be precautions and safety measures to protect them and allow them the opportunities to make healthy choices. The way these products are advertised is so deceiving and harmful, and even more critically frightening is how easy it is for minors to purchase tobacco and vaping products in a growing industry. Advertising reach through social media and peer influence is almost seamless in this day and age. Today's youth face even more exposure and pressure than ever before, and parental prevention is harder to get ahead of because it is happening at a pace that we cannot at times comprehend, track, or even get ahead of. Let us maintain empowerment, responsibility, and strength as adults and as a whole community. Prevention and education on the harms of tobacco and vaping use and an upstream approach is key on this issue. My request this evening is to please strengthen the Tobacco Retail License, TRL, and to ensure that tobacco and vaping products are sold responsibly and in compliance with the laws here in South Pasadena. That's it.
Thank you. And is this, okay? Dylan?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Dylan Rubin. I live in South Pasadena with my family. I'm 10 years old, and I'm the youngest member of the Breathe Clean, of the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. It is important for our city to have a strong tobacco retail licensing policy. I know, I'm just a kid, but I see a lot more than what people think. When I walk around my city, I see people smoking everywhere in public. I see people smoking near Garfield Park and all along the sidewalks in front of shops and restaurants on Fair Oaks Avenue. Yuck! I thought the city was bam on smoking. What about people who suffer from asthma? They are affected too. I don't want to get, I don't want teens and youth to have easy access to purchase tobacco and vaping products here in beautiful South Pasadena. Last year, the city council made a commitment to update the tobacco retail policy, but since then, nothing has been done about it. I am here tonight to ask you to keep your promise and bring it back. Other cities nearby, like Alhambra, Pasadena, and Los Angeles, already made stricter rules to stop stores from selling flavored tobacco and make sure businesses follow the law. Why is, why is South Pasadena not leading the way? We already are the champions when it comes to green air initiatives and clean air electric landscaping because of the tireless efforts of Councilmember Ketya. Who's a rock star? That's just my personal opinion. We can do the same when it comes to making our city safer against tobacco products and youth addiction. Please don't wait any longer as my city's leadership show that you care about protecting our future. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Yvonne LaRose? Yvonne, you have two minutes. Okay, Colin, okay, next, Colin Campbell, Don Gibbs, and then Yvonne LaRose.
Hi. Dear city council members, Adapz Inc., my small veterans-owned business in South Pasadena is responding to the RFP for Vendor Management Services, which was created this year as owned by me and my father, Major Columon Clenden Campbell Jr.'s former NSA. Adapz was shut down in 2022 since I went through a difficult divorce, and we formed a new company with the same name. Adapz has done operations with DirecTV, AT&amp;T, the City of Chicago Procurement Compliance, Oracle Public Sector Accounting, Higher Education Healthcare, LADWP, and others. I'll submit the references to you. Again, this is new technology. The funds are available. Judy Chu did respond, so she gave me the requirements for gun violence. So again, if you're interested, this is some new technology. I'd love to help you with managing your vendor services. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Gibbs?
Hi, good evening. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Don Gibbs. I'm a 30-year resident here in South Pasadena, and I'm here to talk about, trying to get a recommendation to the council to consider a slight reduction or limitation of the tree trimming requirements. So for a number of years, we've had some large trees in our backyard and have engaged in an arborist to trim them to, and reduce their size, but trying to preserve them, and they're not just cut and removed. But then with the eat and fire, it really changed my sensitivity to the vulnerability that so many communities have across the Southern California area. And I noticed that I've got a string of like 80-foot-tall Italian cypress trees sitting right next to my house, like a foot or two away from one of the walls. And so I began the process of submitting an application to have these trees just removed. If they were to catch fire, you hear these lurid descriptions, they're gasoline trees and roman candles. If they were to catch, I'm pretty sure the entire neighborhood would very quickly be engulfed in flames. I want to remove them for not just my protection, but the rest of the neighborhood. Anyway, I would like to recommend, I would hope that the council would consider adding a provision when the time is appropriate to ease the removal of non-native, high-fire-risk trees and not to have to go through the entire process like you would for, say, an oak tree or something. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. And you know, we are considering, we are in the process of amending that, so.
I'm here to give my support for that.
Okay, yes, thank you so much, Don. Okay, Yvonne LaRose?
Yvonne LaRose. A few months back, someone asked me, Yvonne, how are you doing? When I finally broke down and answered the question, I said, I'm concerned about the safety and security of our nation, the regression of civil liberties, the imposition of tariffs on foreign goods, and the erosion of women's healthcare across both military and civilian people, women. I'm concerned that the backbone of our basic necessity industries, construction, housekeeping, maintenance, agriculture, industries where at least 35% of the workforce is Hispanic and that talent is being removed because of immigration, excuse me, actions that are causing costs to rise, and those costs are passed on in dollars and delays and in the loss of homes meant to be attainable and affordable. I'm concerned about leadership that fails to respond, that allows chaos, fear, and distrust to become life's standard. I'm concerned when those over 40 and those who have disabilities and are no longer, are considered retired, reduced to nothingness, and they're cast toward persistent vegetative state or dementia. I'm concerned about SB 79 that lets developers override local character in the name of affordability. I'm concerned about the erosion of community. I'm concerned about the federal dysfunction. And so in answer to the question, yes, I am concerned. We must not rest on a prospective outcome
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off.
of positivity. The leadership we want and need should be here now, aware, responsive, and ready to prevail in the raging storms
I'm sorry, Yvonne, but two minutes, you have two minutes.
Ever vigilant, responsible, responsive
Yvonne, I'm so sorry, but we really have to cut it at two minutes. And I think next up is Shlomo
Thank you.
Natazani. So sorry. We have so many speakers here tonight that we have to limit to two minutes.
Good evening. Before we start, because, you know, when I come here, who comes here? Mr. Trouble. So would you please point your finger at me and say, here comes Mr. Trouble? Just do like this. Please do. Thank you. Now, look at your other three fingers pointing to you, and you're the problem.
Yeah, I'm sure I am.
No, not you personally, but as a council, as a system. Okay. So I have a couple of points that I would like to raise here. I was fighting for 20 years safety and security of our nation, the regression of civil liberties, the imposition of tariffs on foreign goods, and the erosion of women's health care across both military and civilian people, women. I'm concerned that the backbone of our basic necessity industries, construction, housekeeping, maintenance, agriculture, industries where at least 35% of the workforce is Hispanic, and that talent is being removed because of immigration, excuse me, actions that are causing costs to rise, and those costs are passed on in dollars and delays and in the loss of homes meant to be attainable and affordable. I'm concerned about leadership that fails to respond, that allows chaos, fear, and distrust to become life's standard. I'm concerned when those over 40 and those who have disabilities and are no longer, are considered retired, reduced to nothingness, and they're cast toward persistent vegetative state or dementia. I'm concerned about SB 79 that lets developers override local character in the name of affordability. I'm concerned about the erosion of community. I'm concerned about the federal dysfunction. And so in answer to the question, yes, I am concerned. We must not rest on a prospective outcome of positivity.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off.
The leadership we want and need should be here now, aware, responsive, and ready to prevail in the raging storms that...
I'm sorry, Yvonne, but two minutes, you have two minutes left.
Ever vigilant, responsible, responsive to their constituents.
Yvonne, I'm so sorry, but we really have to cut it at two minutes. And I think next up is Shlomo.
Thank you.
Natazani. So sorry. We have so many speakers here tonight that we have to limit to two minutes.
Good evening. Before we start, because you know, when I come here, who comes here? Mr. Trouble. So would you please point your finger at me and say, "Here comes Mr. Trouble." Just do like this. Please do. Thank you. Now look at your other three fingers pointing to you, and you're the problem.
Yeah, I'm sure I am.
No, not you personally, but as a council, as a system. Okay. So I have a couple of points that I would like to raise here. I was fighting for 20 years for the light on Orange Grove and Monterey Road, and eventually it came through, and there was a delay of about four to six months because somebody in here in this building did not respond. Oh, I'm sorry. Did not respond to the Edison. Eventually, we got it. You know, I also, I was in charge of the, or promoted the pick-up resolution. Okay, our streets look like Third World Street, and I talked with you about this before. And Ms. Brown, when I said, "Let's have a proposition to raise $20 per month," you said, "We have plenty of money." Our streets still, I remember that. Yes, you did.
I would never have said, "We have plenty of money."
No, 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 but I say, "You have plenty of money for the public works." That's what I'm talking about. I remember. Look at the record.
All right, let's look at the record.
Anyway, the point is, I still would like you to, for the council to come up with a $20 per month for the next year election time for only for street and pavement and sidewalks. But the thing is that we were joking a little bit, I had a couple of other points really quick, if you don't mind. Okay, so the other thing is, for two months, I'm asking to have a point with Mr. Bassem because when Ted was here, I took him for a ride to show him some things that need to be done, and they were not done. And I asked Mr. Bassem...
I'm sorry, you're too...
Yes, I understand, I understand. We were laughing for 10 seconds, so I like to take the extra 10 seconds. But anyway, that's quite all right. I would like you to make sure that I can see Mr. Bassem on a tour of the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Josh Betta, followed by Louis Cendaro. Okay, you'll be next after Mr. Betta. Don't start the...
Thank you, Council.
And then after that, Carolyn Calustian.
I want to thank the council for the structural reforms you've made, especially since Todd has been here. I'm proud of you. I'm proud of us. We saw two weeks ago that our climate action plan is a complete failure. The city has not one measurement of change over a quarter century, not one measurement. During this time, millions and millions of dollars have been spent, and Councilmember Kachiyadi's political profile has grown larger and larger outside of our borders. Behind the scenes, there's been intimidation and harassment of our staff, domination and aggression in these meetings. I am asking the council member to voluntarily step down from his role as liaison to the AQMD. Michael, we used to high-five at LA Fitness 6:00 in the morning. I got a special love for you. But I need to ask you something. Are you living in a blind spot? Have your personal ambitions got too far ahead of you? Why would you say our Tesla program is the best in the world? And why would you refer to AQMD staff as your staff? I can't create choice for you. I can only ask you to look in yourself, within yourself, to make a choice. Probably the biggest choice of your political career. Again, I can't make these choices for you. I can only ask that you think about this. And I want to tell you and everybody that beyond the fields of wrongdoing and rightdoing, there is a place, and I'll meet you there.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Louis Cendaro, followed by Dr. Carolyn Calustian.
Hello. Hello, South Pasadena. I've been a resident all my life. Sorry, this is kind of weird, you know, recording. So yeah, so I want there to be love and understanding for cannabis, because cannabis has helped me throughout my life. And if we opened up the dispensary right now, it would help my mother, help my grandmother, help a lot of people, you know? Heal the cancers, everything. And we could do it. We have the funding, and we can educate people about it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Calustian?
Yes, hi, everyone. Thank you. My name is Dr. Carolyn Calustian, and I serve as a board member of the American Heart Association in Los Angeles, as well as a physician at Keck Medicine of USC. On behalf of the American Heart Association, I respectfully urge you to adopt a comprehensive tobacco retail license ordinance that restricts the sale of all flavored tobacco products in South Pasadena with no exemptions. This policy is critical in reducing access to products the tobacco industry uses to target and addict new smokers, including children, in this community. We ask that the city bring back a comprehensive tobacco retail license ordinance that matches the model from the Public Health Law Center as soon as possible. The Public Health Law Center is a free resource provided by the state that can help draft your policy. Key elements of a strong TRL include a fee that adequately covers enforcement costs, a set number of compliance checks per year with follow-ups for violations, a designated enforcement body, and a penalty structure that holds the owner or licensee accountable. This issue is of personal importance to me because my mother was a heavy smoker. I remembered hiding her packs of cigarettes and then getting in trouble, who actually wanted to quit but was unsuccessful due to physiologic dependence and addiction. She died suddenly at home from heart disease, not too many years older than I am now. She left behind three children. Also, the families I care for mention that these flavored tobacco products are a household topic of conversation since students are seeing their classmates use them, sometimes even during class. Smoking remains the leading cause of preventable disease and death in the U.S., claiming over 480,000 lives annually. The evidence is clear. By adopting this license, the city of South Pasadena will protect its community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Yaneth Rodriguez, and then Hannah Quoc. But I have two, I have a Hannah Quoc and a Dr. Hannah Quoc. Are those two different people?
Same person.
Okay, so Yaneth Rodriguez and then Dr. Hannah Quoc.
Hello. Dear South Pasadena City Councilmembers, my name is Yaneth Rodriguez, and I work at the University of Southern California, Keck School of Medicine, at the Department of Population and Public Health Sciences. I was invited by the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition to share some educational information regarding USC research conducted on tobacco retail license ordinances by the Tobacco Center of Regulatory Sciences, and we call it USCT course for short. I would like to share a research article that you may find helpful when considering the development of a tobacco retail license ordinance. A main research point I would like to highlight is that a strong, comprehensive tobacco retail license ordinance to regulate tobacco and nicotine products has tremendous potential to substantially reduce youth's use of tobacco and nicotine products, including e-cigarettes. This study conducted in Southern California showed that a strong tobacco retail license and enforcement preventing sales to minors was associated with lower rates of youth and adult initiation of combustible and e-cigarette use. A strong TRL ordinance will collect an adequate retail license fee to cover the administration of the TRL program and enable regular compliance checks in each store. We hope that this research can educate and inform your decisions. Please let me know if you have any questions. Our team may be able to answer. We have additional research that we can share with you that you may find useful and helpful when you're considering this ordinance. And I do have a copy of the article. I have six copies, so maybe it can go to all the City Councilmembers and the city clerk. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Hannah Quoc. And then Marisol Adey.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. On behalf of the UCLA Anti-Vaping Champions Program, I'm here to provide additional information in hopes that you will lend to consideration of a strengthened local tobacco retail ordinance. And this is to further reduce tobacco-related harms related to tobacco access, use, and exposure. So our coalition represents over 130 healthcare professionals, educators, parents, youth, advocates, and community members, and we also cooperate with over 900 pediatricians through our partners at the American Academy of Pediatrics, Chapter Two, of which it is an organization that spans seven counties and has headquarters in Pasadena as well. As a primary care provider for both adults and children, I see the huge risks and healthcare consequences of tobacco use and secondhand smoke exposure every day. In adults, tobacco use and exposure can increase the risk of lung cancer by 23 times, and in children, tobacco use places teens at higher risk of learning disabilities and behavioral issues nearly two times, including depression, aggression, and inattention. Despite there being a California state tobacco sales ban specifically on flavored sale products and selling to minors as well, the California Youth Tobacco Survey report that was published in March of this year show that high school students are still using these flavored products and most commonly accessing and able to purchase them on their own from smoke and vape shops. So by adopting and strengthening local ordinances, specifically tobacco retail license ordinances, improvements can be made in reducing tobacco-related harms for both adults and youth. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. So Marisol Adey, and then Annalee Alcontra?
Are we on the power?
Well, we got three more. It's 53. Go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and city staff. My name is Marisol. I'm a resident and city member of the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to urge the council to bring back a strong, comprehensive tobacco retail licensing policy for discussion and action. One year ago, in 2024, the council discussed updating South Pasadena's tobacco retail licensing policy, a much-needed step to protect our community's health, particularly our youth. But since then, we haven't seen a first draft or heard an update on the progress of that policy, and I'm here to respectfully ask that this issue be prioritized again. I have some personal issues with, or having dealt with, like, youth being able to purchase tobacco and then getting on a train, for example, because I've been taking the train to work, and then having everybody have to, you know, be able to breathe that smoke. And so that's why this is very personal for me, too. South Pasadena has always been a leader in public health and youth protection, from smoke-free parks to healthy school initiatives, but our current retail regulations are now outdated compared to the neighboring cities and communities like Pasadena, Alhambra, and Los Angeles, who have adopted comprehensive ordinances that include prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco, requiring little cigars and cigarettas to be sold in a minimum pack size, and to prohibit the redemption of tobacco discounts and coupons, and restricting sales near youth-sensitive areas. These measures work, and studies consistently show that the cities with strong local tobacco retail laws see significant drops in youth tobacco use and fewer illegal sales to minors. Meanwhile, without these safeguards, our youth remain exposed to aggressive marketing and easy access to flavored products that are specifically designed to attract them. South Pasadena can and should continue to lead by example. Let's move this policy forward, not just to catch up, but to set a standard. I ask the council to direct staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, Annalee Alcontra, followed by Christina Cardenas, and then Dr. Julia Ruiz.
To Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and city staff. My name is Annalee Alcontra, and I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for LA General, formerly known as LAC USC. I also lead the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition and work directly with the community through events such as the farmer's market, the city-sponsored events, and local restaurants, meeting schools, and more. Today, I am here to present on public opinion survey data collected from the community. We surveyed over 500 individuals, and the results reflect that residents view tobacco products being sold in the community as a threat to the youth and are willing to support local laws that reduce youth smoking and vaping. Such as how 90% of residents are concerned that tobacco companies may be using fruit flavors to market products to young people. To build on this, a thorough scan of South Pasadena tobacco retailers found that 80% of tobacco stores were identified to have at least one flavored tobacco product on display. So despite being prohibited under California's restriction on the sale of flavored tobacco products, with that being said, the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition is deeply invested in this topic because they believe there is much more that can be done together to protect and improve the health and well-being of the community. Public opinions reflect that significant portion of residents share these concerns and are looking for actionable solutions. We ask that this matter be treated with the urgency and attention it deserves by both city staff and council. Last but not least, I want to thank the youth of the South Pasadena community. Most of them could not be here tonight because of academic responsibilities, and I have expressed these thoughts through these letters that I have here. I also want to thank and conclude my comment thanking Mayor, Councilmember Michael Kachiyadi for being available to learn about our efforts as an organization and mission of the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition. So very, very much, and thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you all for your attention and your continued dedication for the well-being of South Pasadena.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to clear with my council here. We have three speaker cards and a fourth person on Zoom, which adds eight minutes. We have three minutes left in our 30 minutes, so are you guys open to allowing five more minutes of comment?
I think for consistency, we, because normally we actually ask people to stay till the last, to the end.
I'm okay with continuing so that people can go home.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I've got buy-in from everybody. Okay. Christina Cardenas, and then Dr. Julia Ruiz.
Good evening, Honorable City Council and community of South Pasadena. It is with great honor to be here with the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition. My name is Christina Cardenas. I am a senior project manager with LA General Medical Center Foundation, focused at bringing community voices to the table. We have had the pleasure of meeting with community residents, working within the city of South Pasadena, city of Los Angeles, Walden Park, South El Monte, and city of Alhambra. I have the pleasure this evening of introducing a letter of support by the City Councilmember of City of Alhambra, Ross J. Maza. I just wanted to share an excerpt from this letter that was received. This letter expresses the City of Alhambra Councilmember Ross Maza's support of the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition mission to reduce youth access to tobacco products. Councilmember Ross Maza stands by public health policies that reverse the growing epidemic of youth tobacco use driven by flavored tobacco products. Tobacco retail licensing ordinance are crucial in order to achieve optimal health of people living in this city. In recent years, 25 cities in LA County, including Alhambra, Pasadena, and Los Angeles, have implemented comprehensive tobacco retail license policies to curtail tobacco use initiation. We, as city leaders, can work together to improve the quality of life of community members by adopting and enforcing best practices, tobacco control policies. We believe that the vast majority of residents want to be protected from tobacco use. With the help of local leaders, we can achieve this in South Pasadena and surrounding communities. In closing, we add only that such an effort, if successful, should be viewed as benefiting all South Pasadena residents and the surrounding cities as safe and healthy community benefits us all. Respectfully, Ross J. Maza. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Ruiz.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor Janet Vaughn, and City Councilmembers, and of course, community members. I'm Dr. Julia Ruiz, and I'm the Senior Program Manager and Policy Analyst with LA General Medical Center Foundation, formerly known as LAC USC, and Project Coordinator for the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Our coalition was formed with one clear mission, and that is to support a healthier, tobacco-free South Pasadena through education, community engagement, and collaboration. Over the past six years, we've been listening closely to community, parents, teachers, and especially young people to better understand their concerns about tobacco and vaping in the city. And what we've learned is both encouraging and urgent. Parents are deeply concerned about how easily accessible and attractive tobacco and vape products remain to youth. Many have expressed feelings of frustration that these products are being marketed and sold locally in ways that downplay the real... sold locally in ways to downplay the real health risks. Meanwhile, young people themselves have told us they want more honest conversations about the issue and updated interventions that create long-term solutions. Our work is grounded in collaboration. We know South Pasadena is a city that truly values wellness, sustainability, its resident, and the well-being of their youth. LAC is here as a resource and kindly urge careful consideration for policies that place public health protections at the forefront. We respectfully ask for you to take into careful consideration the concerns and wishes of local community members here this evening that reflected in public opinion surveys and the stories and remarks expressed to you this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last in a person is Myron Kwan, and then we'll take our speaker on Zoom.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Myron Dean Kwan. I'm a South Pass resident. I've got two kids, 13 and 15. I'm a YMCA board member and part of the Breathe Clean South Pasadena Coalition. I'm here tonight because we are deeply concerned about the growing impact of flavored tobacco and vaping products on our youth, and we urge you to fulfill your commitment to pass a strong, comprehensive TRL, Tobacco Retail Licensing Policy. I believe your city attorney has been talking about for, she was charged with talking about it a while ago. It's been a year, right? Just a quick reminder, flavored tobacco is a fruit-flavored vape, two nicotine pouches. They attract kids. There's no reason for such stuff to be out there. More than 80% of youth who use tobacco start because of flavored products. Last year, we were very fortunate that the city council pledged to act. So thank you to Mayor Braun, to council members Caciotti and Primmitt for your leadership. The year has gone by, so we, again, we bring back to your attention this request, and something that actually was decided upon by the city council about a year ago. As has been said ad nauseam, neighboring cities like Alhambra, Pasadena, Los Angeles have already done this, and we really do believe that South Pasadena should not fall behind. As a parent, I ask that you bring this back, you adopt the TRL. Policy has promised our kids deserve a community that protects their health, learning, and future. I really don't know how else to say it, but this is a really easy thing for folks to work on. I don't think it has a large financial impact. And so, again, given where we are in this turbulent times, and we have a lot of things that we worry about, there are some hard hills for us to climb, this is actually a very easy one that I ask that the city council consider and bring back. Thank you.
Thank you. And speaker on Zoom is?
Yes, Edgar Varela.
Edgar, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. My name is Edgar Varela, and I'm a resident here of South Pasadena. First off, I also support the reduction of any tobacco use in the city. That's good for the common health, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I haven't really been attending any meetings, so I'm not sure if something like this has come up before, but I am interested in seeing about the space that is behind the dog park and the baseball cages and the skating ramp. I notice, especially now as my kids are doing more activities, both at the skate park and at the batting cages, that every single day, there's multiple cars parked illegally and people are getting tickets essentially on a daily basis. And I'm wondering if there's a way to do some sort of feasibility study to see if the use of that additional lot, maybe the use that is currently there, can be relocated and that space can be used for additional parking in order to make the space safer so the driveways are not being blocked and the access is a little bit easier. So, I mean, I would love to get this agendized, but I'm not sure if it's something for here or for public works. But it's just kind of a concern as it keeps, as, you know, we keep talking about the population growing and adding density. I think this is something we need to look at as well. Looking at the timer, other quick little thing I want to bring up is I live off of Magnolia and Orange Grove, and I noticed that multiple times a day, especially in the night and all day long for school, people are still crossing this intersection and cars are going full speed to get onto the freeway. I would love to see some sort of lighted, like walking signal, not a light, but just something that indicates for people to be able to cross there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And I just, I've been told we have one more on Zoom.
Yes, Robert Park.
Okay, this is our last speaker. Mr. Park, are you there?
I'm here. Good evening. My name is Robert Park. I'm speaking on behalf of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, the nonprofit advocacy affiliate of American Society. We proudly support and join the Breathe Clean Coalition and its work to reduce youth access to tobacco products. Flavored tobacco remains a leading driver of youth nicotine addiction, harming developing brains and undermining public health progress. We know that about 62% of residents, according to a survey, support a comprehensive tobacco retail license. So by joining more than two dozen cities across LA County that have passed similar ordinances, South Pasadena can continue its legacy of leadership and protect the community health. Thank you so much all for your leadership and your commitment to complete health.
Thank you. Okay, there being no one else present to speak, I'll declare the public comment period closed for non-agenda items. Okay, item number three, reordering and additions or deletions to the agenda. Is there anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On item 14, with respect to the ordinance on commissions, we'd like to work on that just a little bit more and tweak some items, and so we'd like to bring it back to the next meeting.
Is everyone, I'm okay with that? Okay, so we'll pull item number 14, so that will not be considered tonight.
I'd like to pull item number 16 and number...
Oh, wait, we're not there yet. But I have to say my little, I have to give my speech. We're moving on to the consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city manager to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless a public comment has been received or a council member requests otherwise, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any motion relating to an ordinance or a resolution shall also waive the reading of the ordinance or resolution and include its introduction or adoption as appropriate. Does any city council member wish to discuss and pull any item from the consent agenda? Or do we have any member of the public wishing to speak on any items?
I'd like to pull item number six and number nine for discussion.
Six and nine, and what?
Madam Mayor, I have speakers for item nine and 10.
So nine is pulled, so six, nine, and 10. Anything else? Okay, let's...
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar, which are items four, five, seven, eight, 11, 12. That's it.
And 13?
13, did somebody pull that?
No.
Okay, then 13 also.
I'll second that motion. Could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primmitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, item number six. Mayor Protem, did you want a report on this?
No, I didn't need a report. I know we have a number of closure, recommended closures. I think one of the things we found this past year was, especially during the summer, we were slammed pretty hard in our meetings, our July meeting and our August meeting, because we only had one meeting during that time. So I'd like to look at, you know, now the way this reads is we have one meeting in January, one meeting in April, one in July, one in August. I think we have a lot on our plate, and I think one of the things that's been very hard to get through to some people is we put together some council priorities for a reason, because we have a significant number of priorities that we actually really need to get to specifically around infrastructure and housing priorities, which limit our ability to consider lobbyist activities and things that get brought to us that are, you know, smaller issues. So I'm concerned in this case of just, I want to see about January specifically, because I do think we need to connect to make sure that we have our council priorities for the year set. There are some issues, and I'm okay if we don't have a full meeting in January, I understand because of the staff break time and things, but I think we have the council priorities that need to be set. We also really need to get, we need to get a status report on SB 79, and I have some very specific things. LA City has directed its staff, understanding the significant impact of SB 79 that's coming, to provide them with an assessment and analysis, since they are a very large city and well-funded, and, you know, have a team of attorneys and planners working on that. They have asked, voted to, actually, the LA City Council to have it brought back by December 1st. What I would actually say is to, you know, go a little bit on their piggyback there so that we can allow some of that work to be done, but I'd like to make sure that we're having assessment by the beginning of January. I don't want to wait till the end of January, because we don't have a lot of time on this.
So I actually do, I agree that I think there's some things canceled in here. We were slammed in July. I had to get kind of ugly at a July meeting, because Yvonne remembers. So I'm just wondering, though, I've been looking at the calendar, the problem with January 7th, actually, now I'm looking at it, is the, is the, all the materials will have to be posted on January 7th?
Well, I was going to ask, can we have a different kind of a January 7th meeting that's just focused on priority setting, more of a study session? That way, we don't have to have a full agenda with everything put together.
But doesn't the issue the staffs on vacation the week before, and this is just going to overwhelm? This is a time for them to break?
But, I'm sorry, a study session that just talks about council priorities that doesn't require a lot of staff prep? Maybe that's unrealistic.
Maybe do it the second week or third, you know, do two meetings, but leave that first week, people are on vacation, give them some time off.
What was the city manager thing?
I think we can, I was, I think we were planning on having a goal-setting session with you to establish your priorities, probably late January, early February, so we have not got that on the calendar yet. It makes, you know, I've really been trying to give our team the ability to get through the mid-year budget process and the 24 audits before we get that kicked off, so we have some ability to let you know what kind of financial position that we're in before you start setting goals and work plans, that sort of thing. So I think February, early February on your goals is probably a better idea, and we can work on that for you. The SB 79, I've talked to the city attorney, we will be ready to go probably January meeting. We'll do a dedicated workshop with you or study session on SB 79. I've asked for an analysis, and her team is working on that right now. So that was kind of how we were thinking things through right now. We, I don't know that we've got our financial or budget calendar necessarily ready to go for next fiscal year, but I think I would like another, maybe a couple of weeks to come back to you and nail down a goal-setting date, as well as what our budget calendar looks like next year. I'm more concerned with getting ahead of the budget, quite frankly, with your goal-setting than I am whether it's in early January or early February. So I think that I'd like to sit down with Nick and the team and just kind of lay out what those big milestones are that we're going to be presenting to you so you can have that context.
Well, so, I mean, I think one of the things, though, is for the budget, for the prioritization, the city priorities, they weren't, we had that a little bit separate from the time of budget preparation, and to have kind of a larger vision. I don't see a lot of the priorities changing, except it's because there are a lot of, a lot of, we have a long list of council priorities, and they're very focused on long-term projects, which are infrastructure-focused projects. But there are things that have come up, and, you know, I kept saying, things like SB 79 and all the legislative information, that we need to get up to date with to then be able to help set the priorities. So I'm thinking an initial meeting prior to, like, without taking that stress off of you of having to have the budget meeting, but just even a little bit of a brainstorming conversation that we need to have as a city. We, look, we need to have a legislative update. Look Past is something that's fallen off of our city calendar, and it's fallen off of the city, you know, the way that we actually operate on a meeting schedule basis. We should be having regular legislative updates, probably at least on a quarterly basis. These are some of the biggest legislations that have hit. This particular one is so significant, and we have not had information provided for during this entire time period. As I said, like, you know, LA is taking it so seriously, their council voted to have not just like a, not just a subtle assessment, but they have in-depth assessments going. I don't want to put that kind of pressure on, but I think it's something that we can't wait, because we have to have, we have to be ready, and we have to have some strategy. So I'm just trying to understand how we can move forward to have a meeting. Go ahead. And also, we have to get the commissions going, too. Go ahead.
So I think that this is, and maybe I'm missing something here, but what I'm looking at is a table for the regular city council meetings. We can always have a special meeting, right? And so, like, and so I think that this is just to get the regular scheduled meetings on the books, and then if we need to have a special meeting to talk about SB 79, we can just schedule that with the proper notice and do it, right?
Well, I think my point, though, is I think we should just have that as part of our calendar year instead of in July, like, in July is deciding like who's around to have a special meeting, and can we quickly do that? That was a challenge this last year.
Yeah, I think, I think on this, sort of, I'm listening to all of this, I think one issue that comes up with the canceled January 7th meeting is that you get a new mayor coming in on December 17th, and you don't have a meeting with the city council until a month later, January 21st. In the meantime, the mayor's looking at commission appointments and outside regional appointments and trying to deal with priorities and that kind of thing. So perhaps there needs to be something before January 21st, just to sort of maybe set things for the beginning of the year. And the only other thing I would say on this schedule that really was a problem, not a problem, but it presented some challenges this past year, was canceling both a meeting in July and a meeting in August.
I agree with that completely. I'd like to have at least one of those added back. I mean, I feel more confident this year we'll have a budget to you for the end of July to approve, but, yeah, I mean, it definitely caught us right now, given all the huge projects that we were, you know, taking care of in August and September. Not really prepared yet tonight. I wasn't expecting this conversation. I would like, again, I'd like to have an opportunity to sit down with the team, set up a couple of these special meetings. If we need to have one in mid-December, that's fine, but just sort of kind of lay this out. I hear you on the legislative updates, you know, the goal-setting. I think one of the things that's missing right now for the council to put into some perspective is we have spent the last six months hiring staff. We have a significant lift in front of us this next year, getting this organization straightened out. So I'd like to provide that perspective to you and kind of sync that and have that conversation at the same time that we're having our goal-setting policies, just so we're all marching in lockstep. If we need to treat SB 79 a little bit differently with the, you know, a study session, we're prepared to do that. So I'm hoping that we'll have that ready to go in January, but, you know, we really need to think through how we're going to approach each one of these issues. And I think, so I'd like to, I'd like the council to have that whole context as we're setting our priorities.
And I do want to make it very, very clear that I, for one, but I think I speak on behalf of the entire council, deeply appreciate the amount of work that you and your team have put in in the last six months. We had a lot of work to clean up. We've had a lot of operational issues to put into place, and so it's not, definitely when I talk about issues of like concern legislative, we're, now that we're getting to these pieces, it's now the time to like get into the other structures for the council meetings and whatnot. I don't have a problem saying we pass this. I just would like to, what I didn't like, and this was before you were here last year, let me make that also clear, was we had to cancel January, and then suddenly like, you know, throwing in, can we do this special meeting on this date in January? And we also have other obligations that we have to plan for, so it was very hard to then have that kind of stuff. So I don't mind saying, let's go ahead and move forward with this, but I would like to say, like, plan a little in advance so that we can make sure that our calendars are working in advance. I just felt like constantly...
Well, last January, we were also interviewing city managers as well, so that was a lot. But I hear you, and I do, I do, I am sympathetic with sort of the sort of the month in between, but maybe that's a special meeting, or maybe you meet with a city manager or something. And maybe that's something to consider, Todd, but I do, on this schedule, I do think canceling a July meeting and an August meeting, that really slammed us last year. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I agree. I agree with you. I would like to have one of the July or August meetings added back in. In terms of July, we are... In terms of July, we are definitely looking at one or two special meetings in January and February. Again, I just need time to sit down with Nick and the team and kind of lay out all the special projects that are coming your way, as well as what we need to communicate with you to have you take into consideration as you're setting our priorities for next year. And we just need a couple of weeks for that.
Okay. So if you want, so what do people think about July or August, putting one of those back in?
I'm, go ahead.
I say we move and approve this and then let city manager guide us on July or August.
I'm okay with that.
Second.
Okay, so adopt the schedule.
Yeah, and let Todd come back to any modifications.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primmith?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, I think now we're to item nine. Did you want to talk about nine?
Yeah, I mean, the reason I pulled nine was, again, we're actually looking at regional appointments. And I realized that this wasn't on my list of regional bodies that we participate in. We also didn't have the, that we participated in, had a council member from another city say you should join independent cities, it turns out we're members, but it wasn't on my list. So what I'd like to know is, I've been trying to understand these different regional bodies and regional appointments, is to understand how the process works. I wasn't aware of this one, and thank you, Todd, for actually bringing this up and putting it, this is to even like let us know how the vote process works. But I think, you know, the other, the piece, so I'm on ABCJPA, and we are required, when we are appointed to a body representing ABCJPA, to actually provide reports. And one of the concerns is, I've been looking through these regional body appointments, I don't know who the people are, I don't know how they were appointed, and we've never heard from any of them, and we have no idea how they're representing the city of South Pasadena, if they're representing the city of South Pasadena, and what they're representing or doing. So what I'd like to do is make sure that there's information provided on all of the regional bodies, how the appointments are made, and that, you know, whoever is appointed, they do actually need to come and provide us reports, right? So whether it's in a written report or, you know, or in person on a quarterly basis, I think, you know, we have people on, you know, Metro and other, you know, other vector control and other things. And I don't think any of us know what they do. I didn't know, I didn't know how they were, how they were appointed and to represent us. But more importantly, is we're not finding out what those bodies and the information coming from them.
So I, I don't disagree, as I was making appointments in January, anyway, I think that's a process issue that we do need to address. I don't think we're going to address that tonight, but I think it's, but I think it's something to think about next year, especially as we discuss priorities, et cetera. On this, I just also wanted to say, I know, and I did talk to Michael about this, because when I saw that, originally, we thought only Robert Gonzalez was running for this seat. And then I, when I saw that Jeff Maloney from Alhambra was also running, and I know we've been working with Jeff on many things, and I thought, oh, I want to support Jeff, and he's our neighbor, and we're really trying to collaborate with the city of Alhambra on many things. So in any event, I've talked to Robert Gonzalez, and I have emailed with Jeff just today. And so they both support the city of South Pasadena casting votes for Robert Gonzalez. I just wanted to make that clear.
I'll second you, and I spoke to him on the phone. Both of them, both are very good friends. And I met with Robert Gonzalez after the homeless committee meeting this morning. Same thing, both are on board with this recommendation.
But I would like to get reports from them. I mean, if they're going to represent the city of South Pasadena in any way, shape, or form, I would like to know what, what they're saying and what they're coming back with.
Agree 100%. They've been here before, before you came on to council, and they're very good. And actually, Robert fought for us when the EPA, U.S. Army Corps tried to put, and he did put, against Robert's fight, the mayor of Monroevi and others, all the materials, poison right by their water basin, which could seep into the water. He fought for us. I watched, and he put up a good fight, so.
I understand, I just, I didn't even know that this body existed, because it never made it onto our list. And I
One of those many government bodies out there.
Right, but, yeah, so, and I wouldn't know that he fought for us. So I think unless that information gets back to us, so I am happy to approve this and the vote, and we're looking at doing a 2-1. But I do want to make sure that they understand that we would like
So I think that we have to put all three votes to one candidate.
Question, this isn't due until December 17th? Can we just decide this at the next, can we table this to the next meeting?
Could we meet them?
But, but what are we going to?
Just, we can, we can pull this, bring it back at the next meeting. That gives us, or the, or
They're both, they both are in favor of us voting for Robert Gonzalez. I think the question really is this process and the reporting back. I think that's a separate issue to talk to them about.
And it's difficult, because they have meetings, they both couldn't come, because Jeff's the senior counsel for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, which I sit on, and Robert's on many other different regional groups. So it may be tough for them to make a council meeting. When I go to my city's 34 for AQMD, I have several conflicts with ours, so they got to rush early and come over, so it's very difficult.
Then how do we ever hear from them, I guess, is the
No, you just, you ask them to set up a time when they come during the year. And Robert's been here before, Jeff's been here before.
Before, not in what year?
It was probably six or seven years ago.
Okay, so that's my point. I mean, I understand to say that they've been here before and that before is six to seven years ago, that was several councils ago?
You know something, we have probably 50 boards. If we want all the people to come speak to us, we'll never get a council meeting done.
I just want to, I want to know what they do.
I think what we need to do is establish some kind of process to get some feedback from these various outside agencies that we are part of. And so I think that's something we can work on.
It's a great idea, but let me tell you, when I go to speak to cities, they say, keep your comments under three minutes. We've got a busy schedule, so just so you know.
Move the recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a public comment on this item. Josh Bedda, we'll keep it with two minutes, please.
First, I wanted to offer some of my smokeless tobacco to the council, staff members. It's here. Ronald Reagan said it, Jimmy Carter, there you go again. So here we are with an environmental matter that councilmember Caciotti has requested, and we have a candidate who may be a friend, a political crony. If I had a magic wand, Michael, I'd ask you, what benefit is here for you? And I share the concerns that Ms. Rossi has, you know? Is this about the AQMD? Evelyn told me you want to be president. Do you need the support to do that? I mean, how can I express this tough love? Other than the fact that I just expressed it? I don't like this. Going to have to do it. Alhambra is our neighbor. They just put up a crosswalk next to Alhambra Park. I mean, we're doing things with these people. Maybe Mr. Maloney isn't the right political fit for certain people. You know, what are we doing sometimes? This feels political. This feels like things have been going on behind the scenes. Or, Michael, again, love to you, but you've been talking to people about an appointment that we're going to make. You guys are probably bound to approve this tonight, but God bless.
Thank you. I think we have a motion, a second?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I was approached by Mayor Gonzalez, who's just on many regional committees with me, when they met at 8:30 a.m. this morning where I was at, early. They met at 10 a.m., which I was at, early, half the day. And Jeff Maloney is a very good friend. When you sit on regional boards, you meet all the council members in our 34 cities. There's no double dealing. There's only two members that are up for election. Both I've spoken to, did my due diligence. Both are good friends, and both want the vote to come down this way. That's a fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Primmith?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
No.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item number 10. Would you like a report on this? Did you pull this? Who pulled this?
I think the public.
Oh, public comment pulled it. Mr. Bedda? You'll have two minutes.
I love this kind of stuff, because here's a staff that's coming to you to seek authorization for a grant, rather than spring it on you. And I was able to talk to Shannon and David and told them, give them a high five, because they're ready. They're ready for the conversations here. It's a really difficult item. As a finance director, I would beg people, don't say grant. Please don't say it until we have a plan to manage it. It is really difficult when you're dealing with the federal government and the state government with Caltrans, DOJ here. Managing a grant between a finance department and the other departments is, in technical terms, a bitch, okay? And this is part of our problem in the past. We weren't getting these reimbursements. But I speak in a positive sense here about what Shannon and David are ready to dialogue about. And the fact that they're coming to you to seek authorization is the way to do it. Todd, are you behind that? Because it sounds really good. It sounds like your touch. Postscript, P.S. There's a mention here of buying a vehicle. Good Lord, please don't give me a lecture on gas-powered EV, whatever goes on with these things. Please, I'm begging you, let's not have that conversation in the future. It's just personally, because it's very hard, very hard on me.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second, and just a quick comment, Mayor. At the homeless committee meeting where I was with 15 other mayors and council members from the entire San Gabriel Valley today, the L.A. County Sheriff's Department did a presentation, almost identical to the application you guys presented. It's called the L.A. County Sheriff's Department Risk Assessment Management Program. They've got 35 deputies, they're understaffed, only got about a team of five or six doing whole county a day. But it's almost identical, and I saw the presentation with staff, Shannon and Lieutenant Libretal and staff is looking at. So it's a great program. The presentation was incredible. We need more of it. So if you get this, Shannon, it's great, because there's not one that covers this right now. So thanks.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primmith?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay. I think that's all the pulled items. We have pulled our action discussion item 14. We've got, we've got through all the public comments at the beginning of the meeting. We're on to communications, number 16, council member communications. Who wants to go first?
I'll just say that Halloween in South Pasadena is very special. There are certain areas that have really high impact. And every year, I go out and kind of walk around and just kind of get a sense of what's going on. I just have to say that we have, and it's not, it's the broader community, it really attracts from all over San Gabriel Valley and beyond, probably 3, 4, 5,000 people in the Diamond Library Park area. And I walked around for about an hour and a half and just really enjoyed it. It had such a great feel to it. It was family-friendly. There are all kinds of costumes, you know, and there's always the guy dressed as Freddy with a knife and thinking he's big, bad, scary. But that's kind of part of the, of the interest. Not a single indication of substance abuse going on. Not anything that I would consider to be a real danger or a threat or a problem. I mean, we attracted thousands of people on that night, and it was a very safe, very family-oriented event. So I just want to just be proud of our whole region for really coming together and celebrating something that really just makes our community shine. It's a really fun area. And of course, all the, all the high-impact areas, I know Mayor Protem had a very high-impact street, a lot going on there. How many pieces of candy?
2,000.
2,000, wow. Anyway, so that was, that's my report.
Thank you. Omari?
I don't have anything to report. I want to know if councilmember Primmith was in a costume or not, but
I was going to ask how much candy he got.
No, I was, I was too busy trying not to trip and making sure no one else was falling, and I think we did a good job. It's really amazing we get through that season.
Mayor Protem?
So Halloween was fantastic, as was the senior center community luncheon, a great event, and our seniors definitely know how to party it up. I want to, you know, I tend to focus my comments on council on reports and information. I do want to move to start having a reports section from the council members, that we are liaisons or that we are sitting on different bodies, so that I, that we're all getting information from each other, but from the bodies that we serve on. You know, I serve on the SCAG committee, where I received incredible information at the last meeting, I have another meeting tomorrow, but the Economic and Human Development Committee, which is an important body to be on, where they talked about new models coming in from, said the TOPA, COPA models of looking how to do conversions for existing multi-unit family properties to affordable purchase, which would help us towards our housing element. I will provide that for the entire council and submit it to the staff to have included at the next council binder. I think like, similar to, like I said, ABCJPA and whatnot, that they have a reports section. I was at the Metro, I don't know, the Metro, the San Gabriel Valley COG Transportation Committee meeting prior to this meeting, and they provided some really amazing information from other cities that are bringing in micro-transportation projects to help deal with like mobility-type things, including, you know, looking like the city of West Cobina and whatnot, bringing in like smaller fixed vehicle, vehicles to help people get from, you know, let's say Fair Oaks to the Metro, which is something we might need to be considering as we look at the higher densities and increases and how to use it as economic development, how to use it for helping the senior community and disabled community, but really also reducing the number of cars and helping people get to their different transportation stations. They have those available for all cities to look at those RFPs for those programs. And they talked about how those programs made some huge differences. One of the great programs that they talked about was a car share thing, which is something as we are reducing the number of parking spaces and we're increasing our density, we need to very seriously consider what are some innovative models to look at to be able to address that as people go down to one or zero-car households. And maybe we look at, you know, one of the ones they had, and Michael, you'll like this, is an electric vehicle car share. Instead, we're looking at the fact that we have the infrastructure capacity to maybe do that, and they, it looked like they, a lot of these groups were doing it on one-to-two year pilot programs to, because there's a couple firms out there that can help. I also discovered, and going back to why I'm, you know, being so ridiculous about why we need to have information and why we need to make sure that we're being represented, you know, I was listening to the San Gabriel Valley COG report, and they talked about this program called Butterfly Access, which is like $2 ride program, on-demand ride sharing. And it serves Alhambra, Pasadena, San Marino, amongst other cities. And they asked, so, you know, how could we be part of that? And the funny thing, again, because I mentioned San Marino, it was, they talked about how it was based off of some income issues. So then I'm like, why, why is South Pasadena, we're literally the donut hole for this program that really helps people who have mobility issues comes and picks them up. And I know that we have our Dial-A-Ride program and whatnot, but I think we need to be making sure that we're looking at some innovative programs as we move into the density piece. So what I would like to do is ask, going forward, that we do have, you know, written reports. And the funny thing is, there are times where you can actually even grab it, like I grabbed it from the ABCJPA, because, and it turned out that there's, you know, some metro funding coming up, and that helps to let staff know, because we're going to those meetings, you know, and I did let staff know, but just say, hey, guys, it looks like there's a metro funding opportunity coming up that we want, might want to make sure for active transportation that we're a part of. So one of the things, thing going forward for this next year is to have a reports section and ask for written reports and some reports, because, to find out what's happening at different boards. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mark, if you can put those pictures, and thanks, Mark. First one's a picture of the neighborhood block party where we had the closures. And what I wanted is, I need a second to set aside my discretionary money and anybody else who wants to, to purchase this traffic control devices, the barricades, should be a couple road-close signs like the one on the right. That's the road into Stratford at Oxley, and there's one also on Monterey Road. No left turn, no right turn, two of each, and a couple, maybe three or four barricades at each side rather than two provides more protection. That way, we don't have to spend 600, 900 bucks to rent this out every time. No, Julian may have the right number, but if you can maybe, as you bring this back to us, if I get a second, that you'd be able to recommend to us what you think we should have. Can I get a second from anybody?
Say it one more time.
John, I'd like to get a second to use my discretionary money and anybody else who wants to use theirs, to purchase these devices you see in the pictures. It's just a couple barricades. It'd be a road-close, the white road-close sign in the middle on both sides of the block that's closed.
Second.
And a couple left turn. And that way, when, the last couple years my residents came to me, these companies charge like $900 to rent them.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Next. Mark, any other pictures? That's it? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, it's not here. I can't.
It's the desk picture.
Oh, that's the San Gabriel Valley COG meeting last month in Monrovia. We attend, you know, the mayor, Mayor Protem, goes, I have to go every week to make my presentation. That's the 4 o'clock and the one on the right. I think that's Barbara, it was a South Pasadena Nature Park cleanup on a Saturday, I was walking my dogs down there, and there's Barbara Eisenstein, about a group of 20 volunteers next. On the left is a bike, that's Mike Siegel with a bike valet right there. And on the right, that's the meeting I go to every month for the city, representing us in the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. I'm sitting in the LA River Center, 570 West Avenue 26 with about 15 members or elected officials. And that's halfway, the other half of the group that's in the, off of Mulholland Drive and Malibu Canyon Road, in the King Gillette Ranch, there's about 30 or 40 members from the west all the way to Ventura, and that's where Jeff Maloney is the senior council for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Thank you.
And I don't have a lot of comments. I just want to say that there's a lot of road repair work going on, and it's really great to see, and I think that they're doing a great job, as I can tell. So, and I do stop and chat with them from time to time. Number 17, City Manager Todd Heilmann, do you have any comments?
Yes, I'm going to ask Antenna to approach quickly. They wanted to make a couple, an announcement about Athens. I'll turn it over to you, Antenna.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and residents of South Pasadena. Antenna Tiswai, Deputy Public Works Director. Tonight, Public Works would like to provide a candid reminder regarding upcoming deployment of new waste collection barrels for residential customers as part of the city's transition to a three-stream waste collection system. As Athens has alluded to a few months ago here in their meetings, starting the week of November 10th, next week, Athens Services will be, will begin distributing new black trash, blue recycling, and green organic barrels to all residents enrolled in the manual barrel service. Each household may receive up to seven 32-gallon containers. All new barrels include wales, sturdy lids, and are stackable for ease of use. Deployment is anticipated to be completed by the end of November. After the new barrels are delivered, Athens Services will begin collecting and recycling old containers starting the week following delivery, about November 17th. And that will continue on to, up to December 12th. Easy way to remember, it's 1-2-1 to be the end, one would be concluding it. Residents who wish to have their old barrels recycled should place them upside down in their designated trash areas on their regular service days. Residents also may keep their existing barrels, containers for personal use. However, we want to caution that these may no longer be used for waste collection. The new ones are the ones that be utilized. So in closing, I just wanted to remind everyone, week of November 10th, deployment of the new barrels will commence. End of November, we anticipate to complete it. November to December 12th, pickup of the old ones will continue with the outreach program with our residents and the community. And if I may be allowed, the number to Athens Customer Service is 888-336-6100. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I will now adjourn the regular city council meeting to Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, and it is now 8:40. Thank you and have a nice evening.